Good evening Patty, good to see you here mastering the technology.
Oh God, I know. You would think I'd be better at it. You're doing fine.
Yeah, but she couldn't find her way home from the council chambers from swearing in, so.
Yeah, look at that fancy background.
If you guys want it, you can have it. I can send it to you.
It will all be accused of being in the same room.
Yeah.
All right, it's Mr. Wayland's here and it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call this study session of Lakewood City Council for Monday, March 8th to order. The first item for discussion is a presentation by Mr. John Howell from Cedar River Group on the South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership or SHAPE. Good evening.
Hello Mayor, nice to see you. And let's see, I'm just checking to see if my colleague Marty Koestra has made it onto the video.
Yes, he has.
Okay, great.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I jump in really quick, John?
No, please Tiffany.
Okay, thank you.
You provide the segue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening Mayor, members of the council. Tiffany Spear, Long Range and Strategic Planning Manager for the city of Lakewood. Tonight, we do have two guest speakers which looked like they went live before I did this evening, but John Howell with Cedar River Group and then Marty Koestra from, I'm going to get the name of the organization wrong, I'm sorry. Both facilitating, thank you, both facilitating the ongoing work as the mayor just said for SHAPE. They are here tonight as a follow-up to this two previous study sessions that have been held with you to just give you updates on progress for SHAPE, which came out of the mayor's roundtable that began in 2019 to discuss affordable housing issues in Pierce County. And they are now at the point as a group of reaching out to various local jurisdictions to inquire and invite participation in the group formally. So part of what was provided to you tonight in your packet was a draft version of the intergovernmental agreement, which is going to be finalized here in the near future and then formally circulated to the mayor and council once that's done. But I will get out of the way of Mr. Howell and Mr. Koestra and I will be around if there's any questions, but otherwise they will take the lead. Thank you.
Thank you Tiffany, appreciate the introduction. Hello Mayor and council members. My name is John Howell with a small consulting firm called Cedar River Group. And we've been hired by the county and a consortium of cities of which you were one to help the governments in Pierce County determine if they want to create a formal structure for collaborating on affordable and attainable housing. And we were asked to give you an update on where things stand as of today, knowing that you've been briefed before. And we were asked if we could do this in about 10 minutes and then leave whatever time for Q and A that you'd like. So that's our plan. Let me turn this to slideshow, sorry. The next slide, I'm going to pause on for a moment even though it's a sort of perfunctory introductory slide because when the group that Mayor Anderson has been a part of convened in 2019, as Tiffany said, they came up with the name SHAPE. And over the course of the last year and a half, there has been a lot of conversation about what the A in SHAPE means. It was originally just affordable. And the more that the group has talked about it, they've come to believe that what the goal and mission of SHAPE needs to be is creating accessible, affordable, and attainable housing. So they have just, in the last month or so, come up with this notion of the A cubed as a way to represent that. What we're going to touch on in just with a couple of slides here this evening is a little bit on how we got here. What's the, what's the value of SHAPE? What would it do for you and other governments? What's the current status? What, the work that's underway now, what's going to happen next? Ultimately, what will you need to decide? And then we'd be happy to answer any questions. And Marty and I are going to do a little tag team here, so neither one of us talks at you the whole time. So Marty, take it away.
Well, thank you, John. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to just go through these next few slides rather quickly because what we're going to share here is not something that you don't already know. But we've assembled a few headlines going back to 2017. We're growing faster than King County and our rents prove it. In 2018, we talk about Coma's rents and in here, in 2020, we heard about Zoom towns. In other words, this whole notion of people working from home virtually and the impact it has on the changing dynamics within the region. And then right at the end of the year, we got the grand news that Spanaway tops list of toughest places in the U.S. to buy a home. If we look at what's happened with rent, you'll see on the left-hand side, cities and jurisdictions in another county where rents actually went down. But over on the lower right, we see the significant rent increases still happening. Where? In Pierce County. Next slide, please. So John mentioned the journey that some of you have been directly involved in and then all the governments interested in this work have been engaged in. Going back to October 2018, where the mayors got together and then got together again in 2019. And you'll see, leading up to April 2020, almost a year ago, John, when Cedar River Group was brought on to help the group move from this conversation about informal work to formal work. And that has been the path we've been on to date. And John also alluded to, and Tiffany as well, that Mayor Anderson has been part of the steering committee for the last couple of years. The work that's being done right now is being funded in part by support from Lakewood. Tiffany, of course, has been a spark plug actually for the staff working group and an active participant in helping us get a lot of work done. And then I believe your council's actually been briefed a couple of times along the way. So now to some of the more important items related to what SHAPE would do and what is its value. Access to affordable and attainable housing is a regional challenge. We believe that what we've seen in other markets actually makes this viable thing to be thinking about and look forward to. We have more impact when we work closely together. By pooling resources, we can accomplish much more than any single jurisdiction or government can accomplish. And we have some benchmarking we've done of groups in Snohomish County and King County that lead us to believe that Pierce County would be well-served. And then we'll have a stronger voice on housing, i.e. Olympia and elsewhere if we collaborate. And this has been a big piece of why some of these groups have formed in the past. So what are some of the options that might be part of SHAPE agenda? Develop and implement local-supported policies and programs that would accelerate access to housing. Consider establishing, designing, putting in place a capital fund that would help with development and/or preservation of existing affordable housing. Represent the governments in Pierce County and their unique housing needs at all decision tables. And coordinate activities to define a Washington state legislative housing agenda that's specifically contextually appropriate to Pierce County. Then prepare for and respond to increases in households with housing insecurity because of the pandemic. Help governments create housing units. We know from the work of Arch in East King County that more than 7,500 units have been created in the last 20 years because of the work of Arch. Advocate for more equitable distribution of state and federal resources for Pierce County developments. This is a huge challenge in terms of how much of that outside resource can actually be leveraged and brought in to support Pierce County's needs and the needs of people in Lakewood. Possibly secure additional grants. And then here's, I think, a really important point. Because of all of what you know and you are already doing, you can also provide leadership to other communities in Pierce County regarding housing policies and programs. How will this all come together? Well, SHAPE members through the executive board will decide on the annual work plan. It's likely that the possibilities will far exceed the capacity, so a targeted plan will be needed and key performance indicators so that the board can actually measure success and work on an accountability strategy. Combination of actions that address housing needs for individual governments as well as some that would be applicable across the county for multiple governments. And then finally, SHAPE staff will work directly with the staff in each of the participating governments to work on support plans for their unique needs. And we thought it's important to also mention some things that SHAPE will not do. One, SHAPE will not usurp any government's land use authority. Duplicate any work that's already being done by any government or quasi-governmental entity, PCRC, PSRC, et cetera. Or become another layer of bureaucracy, adding new regulations on affordable housing, attainable housing development. John, take it away.
Yep, so just a couple more slides and then happy to answer questions and hear your comments. So I think you know this from your previous briefings, but this is a coalition of the willing. This is a voluntary membership. And we wanted now just talk about the, where we are today and then the next steps to get to a final decision. So this is a slide that shows cities and tribal government and the county in Pierce County. And those governments where the logo is showing have expressed the most interest, either through participation in the steering committee, the staff work group, funding the 2020 work, or have said outright, they want to take the intergovernmental agreement when it's ready to their councils. Obviously, nobody has made a final commitment yet because we are just at the point where we're ready to circulate a draft intergovernmental agreement. But the governments with the logos have expressed the strongest interest. Those without the logo does not mean that they have said they are not interested. They're just a little further behind in having either been involved or having briefings and discussions. So what happens next? We are doing with other governments what we are doing this evening. Sometimes Executive Dan Meyer and Mayor Wooders from Tacoma participate in these briefings. They've offered to go wherever a jurisdiction would like them to attend. And so we're making presentations and having discussions with councils. We are within a week to 10 days of circulating the draft intergovernmental agreement to every jurisdiction. Would expect them to comment on that juris, on that agreement. We would revise that agreement, send it back to the local governments who in turn would make a final decision about participation. So what's in the agreement? Tiffany said she had sent as part of the packet to you a earlier draft. If you've had a chance to look at it, you know it deals with the governance structure for SHAPE, which would be an executive board. The voting rights of all of the members of SHAPE, what the term of the agreement would be. The creation of an operating fund to support some staff capacity that would be created. And the designation of an administrative agency because the staff would need to be housed somewhere. The creation of an advisory board and the potential future creation of a capital fund. So every government would need to make two decisions. One is approval of the intergovernmental agreement. And the second is make a financial contribution to SHAPE. We have prepared formulas based roughly on population. And the reason there's a range of cost here is because ultimately it will depend on how many jurisdictions sign on to participate. When we ran through this presentation with the steering committee, the steering committee member said, you ought to end it with some pictures of what it is we are hoping to create more of. So this is just a example of different types of housing aimed at different income levels across the county, which if SHAPE is successful, would result in more units. So with that, we are happy Mayor and council to answer any questions. And Tiffany can certainly chime in since she's been at the table along the way.
There are any questions for Mr. Howell or Mr. Koestra? Mr. Wayland?
Well, thank you. This is, I think, a great conversation to have and I would be supportive of Lakewood participating to some extent. I still, after reading the materials yesterday and listening tonight and having been involved in a little bit of housing stuff in my day job, how do we hope collectively to steer or, you know, using the word SHAPE, shape the community conversation on policies or incentives that might actually accelerate access to affordable, attainable housing? And the reason why I raise the question is because I know that legal women voters had a big study done and there was a big study presented to the county council on the efficacy of the various tools and the tool bag that they had. And it seems to me that people are out there doing a lot of stuff. So how would SHAPE further shape the conversation in a regional way that, that actually provides value to the member jurisdictions?
Yeah, great question. I'll give it a quick answer and then Marty and Tiffany can chime in. So one of the things we are learning as we have these conversations across the county, which you already know, the level of capacity to enact, to first study a policy, then develop a policy and then enact it varies markedly across jurisdictions in the county. I'm guessing that Lakewood is further ahead in its ability to do the research and the drafting and the enactment of some housing policy ideas than some other cities. That being said, even in the larger cities across the region, whether we're talking Everett, Seattle, or Tacoma, the staffs in those places would tell you they are always looking for best practices, new ideas. How do we tweak a policy we've had in place but improve it? And what I think we're trying to help SHAPE create is some staff capacity that could, for those jurisdictions that are not as far along as say you are, it could bring them information about policies that could have a real impact on housing supply. And for those of you that are a little further along, could be a source of information about best practices regionally or even nationally that may help you modify some of your policies or regulations in a way that would help them be even more effective. So.
Yeah, I agree with you. Speaking with one collaborative voice is going to be stronger than a myriad of voices around the region. So I think that's why this is a good idea.
John, go ahead. Oh, sorry, I might just add. The, there's another element that we tend to see where these groups are working in other areas. And that is this notion of being the trusted broker. So because the governments are invested in the sub-regional entity and the staff work for those governments, they also are on the lookout and can be the glue that carry policy ideas from one jurisdiction to the next in a way that provides some real confidence. And we tend to see these kinds of things happening where a jurisdiction might be wrestling with its incentive zoning or its inclusionary zoning or its multifamily tax exemption policies, for example. They can rely on that staff person to bring on them examples from other like jurisdictions. And it doesn't have to then come from an advocate community or from a body that feels like it might be imposing something upon the jurisdiction. You own it. They're your people.
Well, I appreciate that. And again, my, my last editorial comment, other than to say thank you for the work, because I think it's something, you know, lead council to signal whether they're going to embrace it as a whole, but I would, I would be in favor of it. But I, I think it's important to be mindful that government and agencies like this, we put together these ILAs, you know, government give us this one hand and take it away with the other. And it's been my perspective watching housing policy and listening to the construction clients that I have that in all the good faith efforts to do things like energy code changes and building standard changes and parking changes, we are mandating as a government, all sorts of stuff that makes housing more expensive. So we give them one hand in terms of standards and we take it the way in the other in terms of affordability. We want the private development community to do it all. And so hopefully with a regional voice, we'll be able to kind of address some of those issues because if the goal is to increase and accelerate access, we have to look at it in its totality.
Council member, Marty and I have been very careful not to try and suggest we know what the work plan will be because that's a decision all the member governments. However, on the issue you've just raised, we are hearing from other governments that they have that exact same concern. If that were a topic that the governments at the executive board came together and said, we have got to look at that tension we're creating and we've got to find quicker pathway, so a less costly pathway to develop affordable housing, that could be a work plan item.
Yeah. So I would just note that in formulating this group, one of the perceived benefits would be to lobby collectively when we had common interest on issues such as that, you know, for example, take my personal position on an issue that I know you agree with, Mr. Wayland. The last building code iteration probably added $20,000 per unit to the cost of construction in Pierce County for new houses. That doesn't bode well for housing affordability. And there are some advocates legislatively who would like to squeeze more out of the energy code for the last one or two percent in the laudable, laudable goal of helping the environment. But that would probably add another $10,000 to the cost of each house. And those people at the same time may be advocating affordable housing. So the, the ability to come together as a group when we recognize issues like that and collectively address the legislature is one, one reason banding together has some, some lot of laudable elements. But also, when we're looking for grants to do public-private partnerships or cobbling together resources, different entities may have different assets that can come together. Or we can be going to the legislature as a county collectively and saying, we have a test project. We want to do Scandinavian style, smaller houses that are modular out of engineered wood. And maybe there's some advantages to doing that. So there are these non-building, I would call it, elements to the program that could be very helpful. Mr. Branstad, add his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Howell, I, the, the group that the mayor and the mayors belong to that was formed in 2019, they of course had their, their efforts at trying to be a collective voice and for sharing of ideas in Pierce County significantly interfered with by the COVID situation. And I guess the, the question is, as an alternative to the formal organization with staff and things to do that, what could still be accomplished by that group continuing with its initial organization as we come out of COVID and we begin to look a biennium ahead to be able to go and do that? I mean, I guess, I guess why not? Given that it really didn't get a full opportunity to run and be effective because of the circumstances?
Well, since Mayor Anderson's tenure with the group predates ours, I, he may have something to offer here, but a couple of thoughts on that council member. First is our role, and I say our, I mean Marty's and mine, was not to advocate with a group about what direction to go. We said we wanted to help the steering committee of mayors and council members make a decision. And we put forward a set of options for the group to consider, one of which was, continue what you're doing. You've had an informal structure and an informal relationship and you can keep doing that. Or you, and we gave them, I think, three options. They unanimously decided what they wanted to work towards and do it sooner rather than later was a formal structure that would allow the kind of collaboration that Mayor Anderson and Councilmember Wayland were speaking to a moment ago. So I want to be really clear, this isn't some consultants coming in saying you ought to do this. It's the steering committee saying that's the direction we want to go. To answer your question a little more directly, the, the group could decide to keep doing what they've been doing on sort of this informal collaboration. What I think the members of that roundtable saw is that that gets them so far, but then there are a whole bunch of things that cannot be accomplished. So what they were able to do is put together a joint legislative priorities letter. What they didn't really haven't been able to do is the kind of research or staff work on policies and regulations that we were just speaking about a moment ago. They, they could not, without a more formal structure, create a capital fund, go after grants or philanthropic dollars or corporate dollars to try and create a capital fund. They'd need a structure for that. So Mayor, I don't know what else you would add to that since you were there from the beginning, but.
I would, I would add that I couldn't have stated it as succinctly as you have. The, it basically needs a focal point and it needs some staff help. Or we can't collate whatever good ideas or suggestions come from so many different directions and keep them on track. I think a South Sound Military Communities partnership, you know, there's, there's a constant there by having a hosted staff, one and a half FTEs, two FTEs, that can handle these, go after the grants, keep things on track, take ideas from the various committees and jurisdictions. I think that is the reason why I think there was, if there wasn't unanimity, I didn't hear any strong dissent from anyone going forward.
I guess my, what are my other concerns is as we, one of the advantages of this is it would be that is it would be that Pierce County as a group would be the, the advocacy point is the South Sound Military Communities partnership is. But I think that across the county, when I would look from, from, from Buckley to Tacoma to Pualap to us, that I think different cities and jurisdictions have had different levels of success and are measuring success differently in terms of what their goals are or what they really want to see happen in the world of housing. Lakewood is less concerned about very low income housing and more about balancing our, our, our housing amongst the, the ranges of income, but that's not the case in, in others that are very concerned otherwise. And as, as such, as we've talked with the legislators in Olympia primarily, you know, sometimes we've had different priorities and it's difficult for us to speak with a single voice about what we want them to empower us to do in Olympia and also what we don't want them to mandate us to do. And I think that any party that would join this formal group, there is a tacit commitment to adhere to the positions that are determined by the, by the group, which with one vote for every jurisdiction is very likely to be dominated by the smaller municipal entities in the county, the way that the draft ILA is, okay? And we also work one-on-one with Tacoma, with the CDVG and home of things and create plans and that, 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 that we do jointly. We engage lobbyists to advocate for our particular positions that are down there. And sometimes that if, if voices can't be all consistent, you create problems or you end up having to advocate for things that aren't really your top priorities. So I, I'm sure that the steering committee and that is, you know, going to have to sort of work through those, those sort of questions that, that go on. I, I did want to thank you in your presentation for highlighting that this organization provides another opportunity for Lakewood to exercise regional leadership. And we, we do take some pride in being, not just narrowly parochial to ourselves, but being influential regionally, you know, and of, you know, playing a role on, 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 on a bigger stage and we deal with our disappointments as well as our successes in that regard. But I, but I would thank you for pointing that out. And I would assume that there are a number of other jurisdictions in Pierce County that through the robust incompetencies of their staff are in that same position to help the jurisdictions who are less able to, to, to do things internally, which seems to me to be the biggest positive from doing this is that we can, can lift all those, all the jurisdictions in the county, even if we're capable of moving forward ourselves. So I, I appreciate your pointing that out in your presentation. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I would note that actually one of the perceived strengths of this group, I think is a recognition that one size doesn't fit all and different communities play a different part. For example, I have emphasis, emphasized the fact that probably the most important thing that Lakewood can do is things like the rental housing, housing safety program, where we're preserving affordable housing that is already in existence and not allowing it to deteriorate and become substandard or be destroyed and gentrified. So there are, and there's a recognition that, that there are holes in different communities' housing structures. So that's one thing where we, there is a recognition within the group that there are differences and, and it needs to be coordinated. The second one is the governance structure isn't ironed out yet and what goes forward as a collective legislative agenda would be decided under the terms of the yet to be solidified governance structure.
I, I will say, you know, as the outside party, sitting virtually on Mayor Anderson's right, maybe Mayor Woodard, Woodard's and on his left is Mayor Penner of Ordin and behind him is Mayor Kuhn of Gig Harbor. Those participants have been at the steering committee and they have talked quite openly about the fact that shape will have to be an organization that can meet the needs of Gig Harbor if they choose to join and Tacoma and Lakewood and Ordin. It's not an easy job, we don't want to suggest that, but they've talked quite openly about that has to be a fundamental principle of this.
Yeah, you did note quite accurately that I never got to center square. Any other questions for Mr. Hall or Mr. Cooster or Tiffany?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight and bringing us up to speed. More to come. It's not an insurmountable problem, but it's going to be one that's with us a long time.
Thank you very much for your time and your good questions tonight.
Thanks again. Then we will move on to the annual housing report with Assistant Senator Manager Dave Bure. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Did you see my slide?
Yes.
Okay. This is just an introductory slide to this discussion and it follows very much on, on what's already been said this evening, so I'll try not to repeat important facts. All of a sudden, okay. Just a very brief introduction, each year this department publishes a report on housing activity in Lakewood. There's no requirement for the report. This is something that I've been developing over the last several years and I pretty much found that it's a good economic indicator for what's going on in the community, but it also shows exactly how much the city is involved in housing policies. I'm always amazed when we do this to find out some interesting aspects to this, but it also provides an opportunity for the council to review current housing policies as well as outline what to expect in 2021. Topics covered this year, first of all, I've basically copied sections of the HUD overview. They publish reports throughout the region, they have one specific to Lakewood and Tacoma. This is where this information comes from. We also review rents in Lakewood and surrounding communities, housing production in 2020. We recap the city's CDVG and home housing programs, but in this slide presentation, I don't bring it up just because it's rather cumbersome, the many things that we do and the council hears about it on a very frequent basis with annual action plans and consolidated plans. So I chose to limit that discussion or not present it as a part of this slide presentation this evening. This report also includes some information on the rental housing safety program and the number of inspections we've performed. There's a really interesting factoid that came out that I'd like to bring up with the council that was unanticipated. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Next is a recap of the state of affordable housing in, in Pierce County. They came up with some list of best practices. I in turn took a look at that and compared it to what we're doing to see how we, how we stand. Very briefly, there's some information about the SSMCP housing report and then what to expect for the remainder of 2021. One of the things that comes out very strongly in the HUD report is the increase in net in-migration from King County, which is partly attributable to the disparity in housing costs. Also too, COVID-19 and the economic activity in the metropolitan area is beginning to slow. Coupled with the net increase or the net in-migration in King County is the prolonged shortage of inventory. And you couple that again with the King County residents moving to Lakewood, it has resulted in very strong home sales. If you combine some of the data from the various reports, we're building roughly 2,500 to 2,600 units in Pierce County on a good year. And if you take a look at the region itself, the demand is probably closer to 5,500 to 5,600 units in that same period. Interesting, we're beginning to see a rising delinquency rates in mortgages. It's nowhere near what it was in the Great Depression or, or excuse me, recession, but it is something that we are monitoring. Again, I did mention that new single-family homes, construction has been fairly flat for many years. Apartment market conditions in Tacoma-Lakewood remain very tight at 2.9%. You also are seeing rents for between $954 a month to 1,544, 1,544 from studios to three-bedroom units. And lastly, this is kind of coming from some of the comments we're hearing from contractors. We are receiving reports that financial institutions are less likely to provide for apartment financing, at least in the interim. The condition is expected to change as the pandemic lessens. I put, I point this out because there's a number of factors that are impacting housing, much of it economic and beyond the reach of the city, but it's worth noting, which leads into this slide, and this is not in the report itself, but it's, it's worth bringing to your attention. The Puget Sound region has a housing problem and what is Lakewood's role? The things a city can control are zoning, density and development controls and housing subsidies. Things a city cannot control, land values. As they continue to increase, this is basically coming from the impact of King County, access to credit and combining land values of rising labor, land and materials costs, all impacting housing construction. Challenges unique to Lakewood, aging housing, built-out nature, utilities. Lakewood is not a full-service city. We do not provide water, we do not provide sewer, we do not provide power. And something that I would like to always make, make mention of is the city is still paying, is still playing catch-up on a lot of transportation improvements that are missing in this community. And that includes curbs, gutters, sidewalks and things that you normally find in many urban areas. Rents, very quickly, I've already mentioned this, but Lakewood apartment rents range, as you can see in the table to the left, but basically 56% are found in the $1,000 to $1,500 category. And then the occupied housing units, rental occupied housing households are 40% and owner occupied households are 59%. We believe this is changing. Here's a slide which shows you the, the apartment rents by community. We believe this is for a two-bedroom unit. The high side is basically about $2,000 a month in Seattle, but to year-to-year change, you've seen a minus 10% drop. So you are seeing, this is definitely representative of the net migration into Pierce County. Then you all see the respective percent increases in rent. I did highlight Lakewood at 1,285, second most in the category at 6%, and then you see Stanaway at 16%. I do anticipate that these types of increases will continue into 2021. Lakewood housing production, I would categorize that as fairly good. Normally we build less than 100 units per year and this year we built 167, but you also have to take out the demolitions that we perform, so we ended up with a plus of 129. That's generally above what we see on an average or typical year. Most of Lakewood's housing, most of its new construction is commercial and industrial and it's been that way for many years. Flatting activity, this goes back to the availability of lots and also gets into the topic of infill. This is pretty average. If we can create 116 units per year, I think we're doing a pretty good job, but we normally see this from year to year. These, these numbers are pretty stable. Rental housing safety, we did 2,500 inspections this year. We're down, that's because of the rental housing market, but one of the things I would like to point out, because of the rising land values, single-family property owners are selling their properties. Thus fewer single-family rentals and an increase in homeownership. And you're beginning to see some of those statistics in our rental housing safety program as we re-register people from year to year. There's a lot of reasons why the numbers are down, but mostly it's because of, of the pandemic and people don't want us in their units to make inspections. The other part of the problem is, is that the landlords, if they do have to make repairs or finding it difficult to find plumbers and carpenters, et cetera, to perform the work. But we have been trying to work with them and extending deadlines, but this situation will continue in 2021. Quick review of Lakewood's housing policies, do we have mandatory inclusionary housing? We have voluntary inclusionary housing, which is similar. If you choose to provide for low-income or affordable housing units, you can get up to a 25% increase in housing density plus a whole bunch of other options as well, including a fairly significant reduction in building permit fees. Now, because we do not control water and sewer, we cannot control the impact on sewer connection and water connection charges, those remain the same. Next up, making use of public land for affordable housing. We don't have much affordable, public land. Lakewood's fairly new city, we don't have or own that much property in the city, but we do use the dangerous building abatement and public nuisance program to get rid of dilapidated structures. That in the end results in vacant lots and we've seen reconstruction of new single families and duplexes on some of those properties. But at any given point in time, we're working on between 60 and 65 properties throughout the year, every week. So I will let you know that we find ways of trying to make land available for affordable housing or just market rate housing, even though that we're an infill city. Establishing commercial linkage or impact fees to fund affordable housing development, what that really means, if you build a great big commercial building, you have to pay an impact fee to pay for affordable housing or provide it as a part of your project. No such program exists and that, it's not, it's not currently being recommended by staff. Requiring mixed-income housing development near transit, actually that's up before the city council this evening, as part of the study session with the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan. The second item on the list is revising or streamlining development regulations. We rebuilt or rewrote the entire zoning code back in December. We rebuilt or rewrote the entire zoning code back in December 2019 to help do just that. We did some additional revisions adopted in 2020 and we are constantly making little changes so we can improve our ability to move permits along faster. One of the big things that we continue to work on is the implementation of the PALS plus permitting system into Lakewood's permitting programs. Do we have incentive zoning? We have the downtown subarea plan, the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan, the NC-1 and NC-2 zoning districts, which is mixed-use. We do allow for inclusionary housing and we do have the senior housing overlay. All of these programs provide means of increasing density above maximum levels. Experimenting with new building types, we're up to any requests that are received, but so far, we haven't seen anything. Both myself and the building official are looking for ways that we might be able to incorporate changes. Reviewing and revising parking requirements. Yes, we've revisited this several times already. It came up as a part of the rewrite in the zoning code and will come again before the city council later for action on the approval or adoption of the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan. And do we promote regional solutions? I will tell you that city is very active at PSRC, PCRC, GMCC, SSMCP, which published its own housing report this year. And then we have a very strong ongoing relationship with Tacoma since Lakewood is a part of the HUD consortium. We also participate with Pierce County Human Services on the distribution of document recording fees. Lakewood is always at the table on that particular item, helping the county with reviewing of applications and making recommendations for awards. They are very dependent, if you ask me, on Lakewood to help them through those programs. What's in store for 2021? The adoption of the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan, which is underway, the implementation of the 2021 CDBG Annual Action Plan, which is also underway, distribution of the CDBG CV Rental Assistance Funds, this begins this month, about a week after we get final approval from HUD. We are anticipating a current housing construction rate to continue in 2021, but more multiple family. This one's a big one, because of the state's energy conservation codes expensing a significant reduction in the number of housing remodels in addition. So far this year, we have one. Sixth item is the continuation of the rental housing safety program. A big one is the release of the Pierce County Buildable Lands Report, which is in the fall of 2021. The next one, which is also significant, is Pierce County establishing population and housing allocations for all of Pierce County, including Lakewood. The actual dates of that have yet to be determining, to be determined. The city staff would like to revisit the city's infill policies because we have some interesting ideas how we might be able to do this without creating a lot of angst in existing single-family neighborhoods. This is a policy that will also be presented to the city council later this year as a part of the energy and conservation component of the comprehensive plan. And lastly, the city may choose to formally join FSHAP, which we've already had a presentation on this evening. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. Questions from Mr. Bueller? Hey, we just went on, Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave, one of the things that wasn't specifically called out in your tables was manufactured homes or mobile homes. What is the status of those?
We have, I believe, 14 to 15 mobile home parks in the city of Lakewood. Almost all of them are legal non-conforming nuisance. Many of them have significant, a variety of violations, including health and safety. We have major action usually occurring on those mobile home parks, usually either individually, on individual, single, individual mobile home unit or collectively, because the parks are not managed very well. I would say that's the majority of the parks, the lack of proper management. The one that we are working on very heavy right now is the Carwong Village Mobile Home Park where we have abatement action pending because the sewer system is, is not functioning, not sewer system, but the septic system is not functioning. It's a difficult nut to crack. I don't have good answers for it. What we've tried to do is at least improve, improve the quality of life of the individuals living in them. To that extent, I think we've had some level of success. But the other part of the problem with some of these mobile home parks is we're not even sure who owns the unit. The people themselves may think that they own them, but they're not, they're personal property. When we start getting into tracking that, you may very well find out is that the owner of the park actually owns the unit. So that causes a level of consternation. Mobile home parks is probably the single most difficult housing issue we have in the
Have, have we lost mobile homes, like especially like out in Woodbrook or?
We, over my tenure with the city of Lakewood, mobile home parks have closed. I would think it's around, I would say approximately four to five mobile home parks. Some of them are quite small. Some of them were found in industrial areas off of South Tacoma Way. For example, behind Bohan Plaza, there's a mobile home park there. The Bohan family closed that one. There was another one off of PAC Highway that is currently the location of the Lakewood Ford facility. There's also a couple of hotels and motels that had small mobile home parks behind them. Those have since been closed. There's a minority of mobile home parks that are properly maintained and operated where the city has no problems. But traditionally, code enforcement has been very active in, in these parks, trying to get them cleaned up. And in some cases, we've gone so far as to revoke business licenses to get the attention of the owner. Oftentimes, that, that results in the owner selling the property to somebody else. And when that happens, we put terms and conditions on the, on the business license so that they have, they do practice some basic management practices within the park.
So Dave, could you, could you help us out with multifamily and what is going in right now or what? I, I think there's some construction going on or maybe, I mean, a couple of facilities have been opened. I guess I've seen a couple of things in the suburban times where they were having the permits. So there's two in, in the, in the hopper, so to speak, or working their way through the process. Could you explain what we've got in the process when it comes to multifamily housing and what kind of price point they're at?
I'd have to get back to you on the price point, Mr. Bulkey. There is a pending, a multifamily tax exemption application pending on Gravula Lake Drive, approximately 38 units. There is the recently completed apartment complex that requested multifamily tax exemption from the city council a couple of years ago, and the city council denied it because he didn't want to put in all the improvements that were requested. And that's off of Gravula Lake Drive and I believe Grove Street. So that was recently completed and partially occupied. There's a 200-plus unit apartment complex that was built in Frankbrook. Before that was there, that was one of the worst mobile home park sites for the city. So we actually got rid of a problem and actually created more housing, that's market-rate. There is another apartment complex that's being built currently at the corner of Washington Boulevard and Interlochen, and we've got also 38 units. We used to get density between 18 to 22 units per acre, Mr. Bulkey, but we're beginning to see an increase of 32 to 38. So it's beginning to see a slight increase, but it's nowhere near some of the numbers that we would allow in the downtown or in the Lakewood Station District. We do have some duplexes and things like that that come up and get built in Silicon. I can't remember the exact location. Interesting thing there is that they are required to connect to sewer, which is an important element to redevelopment in the area. We continue to work with the Habitat for Humanity. They have nine units that we will, they will be looking at moving forward within 2021. And not new construction per se, but rebuilding together southbound, I'm, I'm really excited about because they do a lot of minor improvements to existing housing stock. The things that really make a big difference for a reluctant individual, such as replacing water heaters or windows and things like that, although I have some concern with the new energy conservation requirements, that that may create zone center problems. So that's something that myself and the building official continue to talk about. That's what I can recall off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. Appreciate the, the great work. My question to you is maybe a preview on the infill policies that the UN staff may advocate later this year. What are we looking at? Is this kind of an enhancement of the ADU code that we currently have or something else?
Something else? One of the things that came out of some of the preliminary work that we've been doing on contaminated properties is coming up with a scale, a scale to determine the level of redevelopment activity on those contaminated properties. It requires a bit of work because you have to look at each individual parcel very, very carefully, but it really gives you a good idea of the potential for some sites to be increased, have seen increase in density. One of the areas that it comes and pops up in my mind is the single-family residential neighborhood, South, North American Lake Park. These are large lots that are zone, either R1 or R2, which are residential state lots. Many of them have existing units on them, many of them are older, and I think that's an area where going back and revisiting zoning and increasing density on selected parcels may be worthwhile. Another area is on the west side of Lake Silicon. That area ought to be zone, some sections of it ought to be zone for R4 because there's substantial number of units already there, they're non-conforming, that's not doing anything for us. At the same time, it may provide some opportunity for increased density if it's carefully pruned and the information provided so that good decisions can be made. The other thing too that we're looking at is with the Shoreline Management Plan, do I have the authority to allow for lesser setbacks with existing non-conforming uses? And is that enough of an incentive to allow for increased density? Those are some of the areas. It's, it's just, it's taking a microscope, if you will, to certain neighborhoods and really focusing on them to see if it can work or not. You may also see city staff coming back and saying in some areas in the R3 and R4 zones, let's go ahead and allow duplexes and not require a conditional use permit.
Right. Good.
So, so things like that, we're, we're interested in looking at, and really this came out as a result of the energy and climate change staffer that's coming forward. Are there better ways to use existing properties?
Got it. Well, thank you for that. And when our ship comes in with the 14 million of COVID money, once Congress and the president are done, I'm going to advocate $50 of it coming to you to get a new speaker for these Zoom meetings.
I'm sorry about that. I don't know what's wrong. I'm intimidated by this machine anymore because of the issue of my, my voice.
We'll, we'll increase it to $75, Dave, out of the 14 million. We should be able to make it happen for you.
Mr. Popple's pretty tight.
Yeah, true.
Sounds a little bit like a 1969 broadcast from the moon. See, Mr. Brandstetter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bueller, thank you, and not just for this year's report, but for the, the sequence of reports that you, on, on the annual housing reports that you've really done. I know that I find for myself, when I go to groups like AWC or some, some other groups and we talk about housing, that the fact that although you're not required, you provide us as a council, this broad overview, it becomes apparent that not all, not, not, not all, not all city councils and, and town councils are the beneficiaries of, of that kind of work that like you are. I, in your incentives discussion, and you had a list of incentives that we have, and you included the senior housing overlay, you know, as, as a zone, and, 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 and that's, that's in the code and the comprehensive plan. But how is it supposed to work and has it ever worked the way it's supposed to?
That code, that section of the code came about as a result of a previous city council in the late 1990s wanting to provide for a senior housing project on 112th Street. And so you'll see that newer apartment complex that's for elderly individual seniors, much like my age, to the east of the Baptist Church on 112. So that's how that property got built. They were allowed to increase density as well as reduce parking standards. And without the overlay at that time, that would have not been workable. As it then you said, the answer is no.
So, so, you know, I guess, and, and, you know, because I'm, I'm, I guess as we are working through our, what might eventually happen on the old QFC property, being able to go and do that, and amongst the ideas that percolate up from the community, you know, include senior housing, and is that an area that is within an existing senior housing overlay area or do we not put any of those in the downtown plan?
The senior out, senior, as I recall, the senior overlay includes portions of the downtown plan, not all of it, but portions.
Okay. And so if we had a developer who was a senior housing interested entity, how do they use the overlay to, as an incentive?
They would basically come into the city staff and request, they would like, usually they would want to see increase in density and modifications to development standards, setbacks landscaping as well as parking. Parking is usually the big one. And we've pretty much figured that one out for senior housing. I don't see that being an issue. The other way of handling this would be to use the voluntary inclusionary housing component, and they could see construction of senior housing using that as a medium as well. So there are actually options within our code.
Well, it, you know, it does seem that incentives are a, an area that maybe the council, both within, with housing as well as economic development, that just having one on the books doesn't necessarily just having one on the books doesn't necessarily do anything, uh, if, if we're, if, 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 if it's, if it's really not practical from the point of view of developers to do that and then look at it. I know I, I sort of see cottage housing is the same way. We spend a lot of time creating an opportunity for cottage housing, but haven't been able to, uh, we didn't get developers to look at it and say, yeah, that works for us and it's what we want to do. Um, in your, you mentioned in that the new energy code is disincentivizing remodels. And I, I guess I'm, can you kind of explain what's happening there?
Well, the short explanation is if you go in to remodel an older home, now all you wanted to do is say, for example, add in, I forgot the number, I think it's five hundred square feet addition, you're probably going to have to put in a brand new HVAC system, a heat pump, you're going to have to do fairly sophisticated, uh, mathematical calculations, you're going to have to determine your number of credits, and based upon that process, then the building official for the city of Lakewood can approve your building comment. We're not happy about this because we end up being energy pop for the state of Washington. And I can already see it having some fairly deleterious impact upon certain types of redevelopment in Lakewood, particularly because we have older housing stock. Myself and, um, Mr. Gendy have been talking about some alternatives. Um, one of the alternatives, and this is, I'm getting into the, the weeds here, so my apologies to the council, but basically the state took the energy, the inter, international energy regulations, and they cherry picked certain sections here and here and here, and they put it together into this energy code. They would have been better off just to adopt the energy, international energy code as is, and then let us administer in that manner, which is a much fairer and I think a more reasonable approach. What ended up is that, uh, the state has created a cottage industry to just do the calculations for energy codes. And in our opinion, it's increasing costs. And one of the things that we have talked about is going back to the Energy Code Council and requesting that we just adopt the, the straight up internet, international energy code versus the state version. So we haven't moved much forward with that, only it's only recently adopted. We've got a few other things on our plate right now, but that's, uh, something that we have talked internally. I have not had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Popple on it, so, um, he might be a little surprised by, uh, this conversation with me.
Okay, so am I understanding you to say that a, a fix or at least a mitigation is a legislative action at the state level or at, at, at our level?
Oh.
Or is it a, an administrative thing within, within a state agency?
It would be, uh, if we were to do this, it would require approval by the, uh, the, Building Code Council for the state of Washington. And they are reluctant. The only way you can make changes to building code relative, specific to residential uses is going directly to the Building Code Council and making a request. I'm not sure that they would approve the request, but is it worth asking the question in the form of?
Okay, uh, and, and you, but you would think that we would not be the only city that would see this the same way?
I would tell you that, uh, I'm sure other cities would see it the same way, but because housing dominates what we do in this department, we are very sensitive to all elements of it, from density to zoning to building code and the level of detail that we see in some of the code requirements today. I think we're a little in front of people when we take a look at this and, uh, say, how is this going to impact our ability even to do plan review? Because I'm thinking that some cities are going to have to hire it out given the, the new requirements. We're not, not yet.
Okay, um, one of the statistics that you mentioned was we have forty percent rental housing, fifty-nine percent owner occupied housing, but those are percentages of units, not population numbers. Is, is our, uh, our rental housing resident percentage versus owner occupied resident percentage almost the reverse of that?
It's not quite the reverse, but we are seeing in some of the numbers when people renew, that we're seeing fewer and fewer single-family residential rentals. And I think it's a direct relationship to the increase in housing cost and that you could make more money selling your house and renting it out. Plus, if you sell your house, you're no longer subject to the eviction moratorium. That might be part of why some people want to do this. I'm not sure, but in my conversations with, uh, Mr. Godley, we are beginning to see some switching of, of that, that number. I can't give you a provocation at this time, Mr. Pastor.
Yeah. And then with your, uh, where in the beginning you talked about the in migration of people from King County, putting pressure on, uh, uh, home prices and, and, and rents, uh, is there been a corresponding in migration of jobs?
Hard. Hold on, I gotta, I gotta move or the light goes out. It's hard to tell right now. Um, with COVID and the number of people that are working from home, I, I do believe that you're seeing, uh, jobs that were in King County now being in Pierce County, but they're in residences. An interesting statistic is that, uh, prior to COVID, uh, there are roughly between a hundred and ninety thousand to two hundred thousand people commuting to Pierce, that's from Pierce County to King County every day. And we, uh, if you look at some other numbers I've come across with WashDOT, they're seeing a, a reduction of seventeen to maybe about a thirty percent in the number of vehicle trips or VMPs. That still needs additional study and that's going to be coming out in twenty twenty-one. But I do believe you're seeing people who were working in King County, who were living in Lakewood, are now living in Lakewood and working in Lakewood, or in, in, living in Pierce County and working in Pierce County. We have that going on, uh, plus the, uh, fact of the fact that housing is cheaper. And here you can get something, uh, purpose in, in King, in King County, you may not be able to do that.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Buhr. Again, I, I appreciate the, um, all the information that was in the, the report that you, you've, you've provided, uh, but I have no more illuminating questions for you.
Any other questions for Mr. Buhr? Well, thank you, Dave, and I will, will, well, I get Mrs. Farmer?
Sorry, late, late to the party. Um, mostly I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Buhr, for pulling all of this together. I've, I've read some of these reports separately and, uh, in addition to the League of Women Voters and some of this, uh, some of these other things that are floating around out there, and it was, it was, it's really nice to have it aggregated and, and called out all in one spot. I'm curious if there's anything, um, because this is a very detailed look at Lakewood, and we just had a presentation looking at things on a more regional level, and I'm curious if there's any, I don't even know how to phrase the question, crossover or connection or, did you, did you run across anything when you were pulling the report together or as you have done in the past couple of years, um, from a regional perspective?
It's hard to answer your question because nobody does annual housing report and gets into this level of detail. I think if you had a, a format that everyone had, we have a pretty good indicator of what's going on within communities. And, you know, that's some of what's going on or being said at the regional level. Uh, so these are kind of illuminating reports because you really get a good idea of what's happening, uh, and the housing production in particular and the number of lots. If that really comes out of Master Builders Association, because we're always wanting to know what's going on. And, um, uh, this, this report is still of a need, I think, but I would also tell you, it would be nice if other cities were doing this, so you could kind of compare one to the other, but that doesn't exist. And I'm not trying to shout out Lakewood as being specialty thing, but the fact is that we spend a lot of time on housing. And, and I think this is important to share with council members and divisional.
Thank you.
Mr. Whalen?
Just a final question, Dave. Based on the numbers that you showed where their trends were declining in numbers on single-family housing as a residential or a component of the residential rental market, seems to me, in light with your comment, that anecdotally I have seen it to be true that folks who have single-family homes for rent have opted this year to consider putting their homes on the market and taking it out of the rental pool for two reasons. One, the market is pretty hot, and two, uh, those who have had issues with rents that have not been paid due to COVID-related issues have found the eviction moratoria to have kind of a, the deleterious effect. They've wanted to get out as soon as they can, and one way is to give the sixty-day notice of intent to sell, and then they get those homes on the market and they sell. And I think we're going to see that not only are existing single-family houses likely going to be more owner occupied or sold to other owners, uh, you're going to see new housing inventory, single-family homes likely not going to be available for the rental market, it's just too expensive. And you can't justify, uh, the rent to accommodate the cost of a single-family home anymore. So it's going to have a real shift, I think, in the rental market and the rental pool over the next five to ten years.
Yes, I would agree with you.
Hmm hmm.
The other thing I would also point out is that we haven't seen, uh, the big influx of ADUs that other communities have. We only built three.
Right. Well, I think that's coming. I think it's an actual good infill policy, but I think it's coming. That'll help.
Any other questions, Mr. Buhr? Going once. Well, we could spend a lot more time on this, but we're not, uh, at this point. Thank you for, uh, all of your detailed analysis. I think we're going to get some, uh, over the next year, where the census will, uh, dribble out some rudimentary housing numbers. I, I think the, the most recent, uh, number of occupants who are renters, uh, number from the Census Bureau is like forty-three and a half percent or something, and that is a slight shift from what it has been historically. So it's going to be interesting to see what the real, real number from the census is. But, uh, thank you again, and I believe you're staying online to be joined by Ms. Newton on the next item or are you signing off?
I can, yes.
So next item on the agenda is the two thousand twenty business retention and expansion report, and you have economic development. Yeah. Rebecca Newton and Dave Buhr. Ms. Newton?
It's good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Are you seeing my screen? Okay. There we go. So are you hearing me okay? Yes, thank you so much. And seeing my screen? Great. Okay, um, good evening. Um, it's, uh, nice to be with you this evening. I'm going to share with you some information, uh, from the report that we prepared, uh, for the annual, uh, business retention and expansion work that we've done over the, uh, last year. As you all know, uh, business retention and expansion is a part of our, our program and a core program for any economic development plan. It has a high return on investment because business is already invested typically in a community, and it's much easier to retain an existing business than to recruit a new one. We also know that approximately seventy to eighty percent of new jobs come from existing businesses. Typically, our visits are informal and, um, they're basically a means for us to develop relationships with our owners here and gather valuable information to help us know what's working as well as what's not, not working well, uh, for those here in our community. It also helps us to identify programs and adjustments that we might look at, uh, making, uh, going forward to make it a better community, uh, for businesses and, uh, more, um, open to businesses, uh, to doing business here in Lakewood. Through the BRE program, uh, we have also increased our partnerships, particularly last year, and collaborations, uh, with our resource partners. Uh, we deploy those resources and or provide a connection, uh, for businesses in order for them to continually improve on the products and services that they offer and thereby increasing their chances of success. Uh, these touch bases with the businesses also help to guide the city policies and programs. Support, uh, that, uh, we provide also helps us to, you know, look to the future and providing a sustainable, um, environment in which to thrive. And sometimes simply just saying thank you to the business is well received and goes a long way and shows appreciation, uh, and goodwill. Uh, we do, um, also in addition to the visits, of course, the surveys, uh, we provide news and also support teams. Going a little bit into industry impacts over the last year, of course, one of the hardest hit industries was the hospitality industry. The Lakewood-Dupont area has been less affected in general, in part due to the new hotels, but mostly due to supply chain, military contracting and port traffic. Um, as other states also loosen up their restrictions, we will see, uh, somewhat less competitive advantage, at least for the short term, uh, but in the long term, we are pretty well positioned, um, going forward. We saw our sales tax flattening in twenty twenty after an approximate seven to ten percent or more increase over the last, over the last, uh, several years. Uh, second quarter of twenty twenty took a little bit of a dive due to the restrictions, uh, when COVID first hit, and then we saw a little bit of a bounce back in quarter three. Uh, we have not seen the actual numbers for quarter four, but in general, overall, sales tax has flattened due to the restrictions of, of COVID. And some of these smaller undercapitalized businesses and trade associations, as well as event, venues here locally have definitely been among the hardest hit. Um, as you'll see there on this, this page, um, some of the best performing sectors have been information tech, consumer discretionary spending, materials, communication services, healthcare, industrials and energy. And while the hardest hit, of course, um, arts, entertainment, recreation, accommodations, food services, educational services and other services except for public administration. So in, uh, turning to some of the work that we did in our outreach in twenty twenty, we did reach out to a hundred and twenty-seven, uh, businesses. Most of them were by phone due to the restrictions, of course. Um, we had a, a couple of Zoom meetings here and there, um, and these, uh, visits represent approximately ten thousand jobs. We try to visit across. We try to visit across wide variety of industries. And we also work closely with EDB on some of the visits as well as Pierce County. Some of the things we've also done with our resource partners have been to develop weekly meetings with the EDB as an example, at least monthly meetings with a number of other Pierce County businesses and agencies, also regionally with the Greater Seattle Partnership, the Manufacturing Industrial Council, the Workforce Development Council and the Washington Economic Development Association. We've also developed and administered the coronavirus relief fund programs to small businesses and commercial landlords. We worked closely with the SSMC group and worked with the North Clear Zone property owners on acquisition and outreach as well. We've seen massive disruption over the last year and we've also seen major innovations. A lot of retooling has occurred for manufacturing. Many companies had, have pivoted to manufacturing personal protective equipment and other items as an example. And key business activities and experiences are also noted on page three of the actual BRE report. On the annual survey, I just wanted to touch on some of the key points. We did have 122 respondents, which 42 stated that their revenue was 100,000 or less. So very small businesses overall. 48% expect increased sales in the next year. 40% plan to expand in the next year and 5% plan to close. At that time when we did do this survey, 47% export. And of that, 40, 45% is outside the state and 10% is outside the country. Of the industries, 30, 34% said their industry is growing. While 29% is declining, 32% stable. And then 5% said they were unsure, unsure whether or not they were growing or declining or stable. 50% of the businesses have added services due to coronavirus. And a local stat here is that 81% of our 2,600 local businesses have five or four fewer employees. Moving on to a few additional workforce stats. The businesses said that their biggest challenge was the ability to attract new employees. More than 30% of the respondents noted ability to retain employees, stability of the workforce and availability of qualified workers as a challenge. Many employees currently or employers currently recruit through their personal network. That was the highest on the scale. They also use employment centers and job boards, local media and professional recruiters and social media. Moving into business needs, of course, the biggest challenge of 2020 was the COVID restrictions followed by workforce management. Also, we found that the most helpful assistance, pardon me, was to provide information on e-marketing, social media and online assistance. Also workforce planning and employee training as well as business networking and partnering, followed by business and marketing plans and then government contracting and productivity. The highest needs, increased workforce. Also employee trading, additional services for customers, process improvements and additional product lines. I pulled out one of the level of satisfaction graphs just to give you an idea on that. So 60, 60% of the respondents rate the quality of life in Lakewood is very good to excellent and 90% is satisfactory or better. 45%, 45% rate parks and recreation is very good to excellent. 43% rates the general city services is very good to excellent while 34% rate development services is very good to excellent and 61% rate that, that satisfactory or better, which is actually quite good, given that we are not a full service city and we're working with a lot of moving pieces for development services. Okay, what's working well for businesses? Businesses state that key factors for success were increased collaboration and cooperation with partners and employees, adapting and adding new products and services, great customer service, professional marketing, employee training, customer referrals and reputation. And then what's not working so, so well, of course, are the COVID restrictions and face to face meetings. Also finding good talent and managing workforce as I managed or I mentioned before. Industry price fluctuations, technical difficulties, supply chain issues and funding were top reported issues. And we also did a few other surveys during the year. After COVID hit, we reached out to businesses and at that time in April, May, 92% were experiencing losses due to the restrictions. 72% were concerned about the impact to their business and even 40% feared their business would be closed permanently. And then in July, we also did another survey. And at that time, 56% of the businesses were fully open. 48% were uncertain about the future of their business and 33% were experiencing supply chain issues. So we followed on that with another survey in September on business needs. And those sentiments are, sentiments are also noted in the full BRE report. And with that, that includes my presentation.
Questions for Ms. Newton. Ms. Moss.
Ms. Smith, I'm just curious as to the rating for the parks and recreation. Did they give a reason why they rated it the way they did?
In this particular survey, we did not ask for a reason, but we can consider that for future.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thanks for staying on top of this and I'm sure we're going to be in need of your expertise and knowledge as we enter the great challenge of the next round of federal funding being distributed. So thanks for keeping track of all of this.
Thank you.
Now we move to a review of the Lakewood Sub Area Plan. Ms. Schumacher. Oh, there she is. You're muted, Tiffany.
Sorry, I was trying to get my phone going in case that was a problem. My apologies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, once more. Tiffany Spear, Longreach and Strategic Planning Manager for the City of Lakewood. And what I'm going to do is walk you through the various components of what I have termed the Lakewood Station District Sub Area Plan package. And I'm going to stop saying Lakewood Station District Sub Area Plan and just call it LSBS. And for the benefit of Councilmember Bell, if there's any point in time where I am going too fast through these things, please feel free to stop and let me know and I'm happy to back up. But and actually for Councilmember Farmer as well, I should have said that because I will be referring several times to some previous actions by council which occurred in October of 2018. So again, for the two newer councilmembers, please stop me if you feel the need for clarification. I'm going to share my screen. So to start with some legal underpinnings for the sub area plan process that Lakewood has taken advantage of twice now. Under the State's Growth Management Act, there is a provision and a recognition that a city may want to not only have its citywide regulations and zoning, but also take special attention to particular sub areas of their jurisdiction and perhaps lay out different rules or design standards or zoning densities or a general character for that sub area versus other parts of the city. And Lakewood has, as I just mentioned, done this twice now. In 2018, there was an adoption of a downtown sub area plan. So on this map, you'll see the outlines for that in gold. And then what we're talking about this evening is the part of the map that's in red. It's the proposed LSBS boundaries. And as you can see, it's, it heads right down to I-5 and between I-5 up to 108th Street Southwest between the south and the north boundaries. The eastern boundary is Bridgeport Way for the most part, and then on the west, it moves all the way over to 512. Within your packet this evening, there were a number of attachments. The plan, which is the policy envisioned similar to the city's overall comprehensive plan. The second attachment is the development code, which will actually be codified eventually in its own title within the Lakewood Municipal Code at 18C. The third attachment shows where amendments are needed in our other citywide development code to return to this new sub area code. Attachment D is clarifying and listing those amendments that will be actually brought in front of you as part of the 2021 comprehensive plan amendments where it's simply the updating to the comprehensive plan to say that this sub area package has been adopted and making sure all of that cross referencing is accurate. And the final attachment is the Plan to Action, which is CIPA based. And I also have with me this evening Lisa Greer, who is the consultant that worked with us throughout this process for the Lakewood Station Plan as well as with the downtown plan a few years ago. She'll just mention the process for the Plan to Action as well. So the Lakewood Station District idea has been around in the comprehensive plan ever since the first version was adopted. And this is here is a map that was first produced back in 1999. And if you look, I'll try to use my mouse as a, as a direction here for your attention. But this is Bridgeport. This is I-5, or excuse me, this is Pacific Highway. This is I-5 itself. And then again, this is 108. So it's generally the shape that you just saw in red on that newer map. However, originally there was a thought that Springbrook, which is south of I-5, would also be included in the sub area. That was actually recommended to be removed by the council at the beginning of last year when this process began. And then over to the northwest, there was also the addition of some additional properties. So the sub area does now go up to the 512 interchange. Looking at the city's overall zoning map, the idea here is to simply show you in relation to the rest of the city where this, this sub area is located. The red here once more is downtown. So if we were meeting in person, we would be in the middle of this sub area plan. But the Lakewood Station sub area is now, as I just mentioned, a slightly different shape than what you saw in 2001 and includes a number of different zoning designations and legacy designations we'll talk about shortly. In terms of public engagement, this was obviously affected by COVID over the last year. The beginning of this process was when the lakewoodstation.org website went live, which was December of 19. That has been maintained and kept up to date throughout this process to provide the ability for people tracking this project to participate electronically, to know about when they were going to be, whether it was a survey or a stakeholder meeting or meetings such as this evening with the council or the planning commission. There were articles about this project in the Winter and Summer 2020 Connections Magazine. Before COVID closed things down, there was an in-person stakeholder session last February. And then there was a second one that was held virtually last fall. The planning commission, as you can see, has had a number of informational sessions and then they went ahead, held a public hearing and took action on February 3rd to forward this to you. You, as a council, have had four or five different meetings. We're here tonight as a study session. And then in about a month, there will be a public hearing in front of the council and then discussion and action following that. There were sub area resident and business mailings made last May and again in January of this year, just to try to keep businesses and residents up to speed on what's going on, to refer them to the website as well as where they can access meeting materials and watch videos of meetings. And then there was, as I mentioned, a survey which was held or organized and conducted last May through July. We had about 95 representative responses. And these are some of the results from those responses. Some of you have seen this before, but this is a summary. And if you look at the color coding and the key on the right, some of these are people who live in the sub area, some work in the sub area and some were Lakewood residents that neither worked nor lived in the sub area itself, but they wanted to participate in this survey. So going very quickly through this, essentially there was a desire for maximizing the area around the sounder station for new jobs, but also those that work in that area were looking for homes near the station as well. There was a desire for better non motorized transportation and connections. There was a desire to have additional retail, restaurant and entertainment uses. Primarily that response came from those who work in the area. And then just wanting an overall improvement in the design and the attractiveness of the area was something that all three sub populations there that answered the survey well in my regard. Looking at some of the demographics within this sub area of the city, and I know the council is probably well aware of these things, but to highlight it, it is a relatively small portion of the population directly within the sub area boundaries. But if you get within a half a mile of the station, you have 13% of the population. And for that 13%, you'll see that they are at about 67% of the city's median income and at 49% of the county's median income. So they are lower income area. You'll see in the kind of red color there to the right of that, that it is lower homeownership, higher renting, lower median home value and lower median income than what you have in the rest of the city. It is more diverse racially and ethnically. You have 13.5 fewer percentage, excuse me, of white alone versus citywide. There are people of color representing more than 50% of the residents and poverty rates are either above 40% or they are more than three times the average poverty rate in the metropolitan area. So all of that to say, lower incomes, more racially and ethnically diverse and lower value in the homeownership, both numbers and value of the home itself. What you'll see here is most of the housing units within this area, in fact, over 80% of them are multifamily. There is some risk of displacement in There is some risk of displacement in single-family homes. About 71 of the 86 could be displaced and redeveloped over time. And then there are 88 units either in an RV park, multiplexes, or multifamily areas that are most likely to redevelop within this area per analysis by the consultants. In terms of employment, you have over 170 businesses, almost 2,300 employees. Again, if you expand that out to within half a mile of the sub, excuse me, the station district, the station itself, 640 businesses and 6550 employees. Mostly what you see in this subarea is services, so lodging, healthcare, automotive, legal, other service industries. 65% of the workers in this area are employed by services. And then you also have some retail business. 22% of the workers in the area work for retail. You'll see at the bottom there, about 44% have an income over $40,000 a year, but 18% earn under $15,000 a year. So once again, highlighting the demographics of what we're dealing with within this subarea of the city. So, the, coming back to the boundaries and what's within it for this subarea, you see the points of interest, some of which highlighted with yellow dots here. There is the Sounder Station itself, of course. There's St. Clair Hospital and the medical plazas that surround it. There's the 512 Park and Ride. You have both Pacific Highway and Bridgeport Way commercial areas, and then there's a residential area just to the north of St. Clair's. As you know, the city overall is pretty much built out, and that's certainly the case within the subarea as well. So as this discussion happened with stakeholders and as the consultants were putting together the plan and development code, this is all done in terms of redeveloping areas that have been developed in some places for quite a while. In terms of transportation, one of the things that the consultants did was to take a look at the half-mile buffer around the Sounder Station. So this is larger geography than the subarea boundaries itself and slightly different in order to take a look at how to best optimize use of the Sounder Station and its connections to downtown, as well as the Sounder Station and its connections out to I-5, either north or south, and then east using 512. So part of the discussion here involves the half-mile radius as opposed to just the area within the subarea boundaries. This multicolored map here shows you in general the existing land uses. So, the blue are the public institutional, this is the Sounder Station. The red here would be St. Clair's. These oranges and browns are the main residential area within the subarea. And then you have some industrial over here in this lilac or dark purple. You also have transportation and utilities, so here's that 512 interchange. And then within the subarea plan, you also see few environmental constraints. So, looking at this through the Pierce County G I S system, the only environmental constraint or identification within the subarea was the 2017 regulated floodplain. And the fact that it's regulated does not mean it's unbuildable. It simply means that there are additional requirements on development within that part of the city. So for instance, building higher than ground level in some cases for certain types of uses, things like that. And so given all of that, plus the proximity to major transportation corridors and various transit options, the approach also within this subarea plan is that this is primed for redevelopment at higher densities to allow additional types of employment, additional types of housing over the next 30 years or 20 years, I should say, in this plan, right? So after taking a look at the original and that map, if you recall, back from 2001's Comprehensive Plan, there was also a vision that had been developed at the time. This was sent out to the public and the stakeholders to take a look at, and it was updated a little bit here. But you'll see in red the focus on the subarea's vision to create a multimodal commuter hub that is amenity-rich. It has high-quality pedestrian-oriented urban development, a dense mix of different types of office, retail, and services. And now also having both ownership and rental housing opportunities at higher densities surrounded by, supported by, that regional transportation access. Going back though to the demographics that I just went through quickly, there were three big items that were raised by residents, by stakeholders, and other interested parties, including the Planning Commission. First and foremost was the risk of displacement of those who currently live within the subarea. And the idea that this plan and its development code and other incentives that maybe could impose really need to try to keep those that live in this area able to continue to live in the subarea, ideally at least somewhere in the city. And so looking for affordable housing options and displacement minimization as this plan goes into effect. Then also looking at other types of housing, so more than what's currently there, which is for the most part that multifamily that's been there a while. What other types of missing little housing? So attached single-family, row housing, stack, flat, mixed-use could be brought into this area. And then also parking, and this I know has come up a couple of times this evening, but it's also going to come up in relation to this subarea where there was kind of a policy balancing act and conversation back and forth regarding the need to, in some cases, minimize parking requirements to help with housing affordability and/or commercial development viability versus those that currently live in the area, those that are working and living at a certain demographic and economic strata are going to have cars, and they may well have multiple cars. So what are we doing? Talking about, in some cases, minimizing parking. So those two competing policies came up a number of times as we go through this process to develop this subarea. This is the proposed land use going forward within the subarea. And also on the side, you'll see some economic and residential capacity planning. So, you'll see commercial zoning, multifamily 3, where there's that large patch of residential development already. The public institutional remains. And up to the light purple here, you'll see that Air Corridor 1 is going to have some limitation on the type of development that can happen there. But all of these zones are what are currently there. There was no rezoning of anything within this subarea. The decision was made to, rather than rezone anything, simply look at what was allowed within each zone within the subarea to try to maximize the goals that were envisioned, the higher densities for population and jobs, and incentivizing those things to happen at various affordable, entertainable housing levels and types without having to change a new zone. What you see here, though, is about 1,700 new dwellings is anticipated, and the capacity for new jobs is 1,276. This is about half or three-quarters of the residential capacity anticipated in the downtown subarea and about a quarter of the employment that's been targeted for the downtown subarea. Some other key concepts within this plan and development code are, of course, taking advantage of the proximity to not only the Sounder Station, but also bus and other transit opportunities. You have the idea, and again, this is not changing the densities, but trying to get closer to the max density of the 40 units per acre under the MF3 zone and the 54 units per acre in transit-oriented commercial zone. Looking for supporting employment and business uses within the area. Again, looking at new types of affordable housing, both rental and homeownership types within the subarea, and then making sure that this place is walkable and connections are made between, for instance, the Sounder Station and this multifamily area, between the station and St. Clair's, and then actually down again below I-5, some connections down there into Springbrook as well. So the plan is all of the policy and the vision and coming up with these ideas. And then there's the accompanying development code where you actually write down the rules that an applicant needs to follow in order to redevelop parcels. And similar to the downtown plan, so again, in 2018, the, most of the council will recall, the downtown plan had this hybrid form-based code where you created rules for a type of street. And depending on the street that a building was located on, be it residential or an arterial or some other classification, you would then have these types of buildings are allowed, these types of design of the building is allowed. This is where it has to get placed on a lot. Maybe there's requirements for where parking would go, on what type of pedestrian or other non-motorized access to the building there needs to be. All of that is much more the focus of the code, rather than saying within this area, you can only have these types of uses. The idea is you're designing the look of the building more so than you're saying what can be done within it. And that, the intent there is to allow a little more creativity by developers or redevelopers to put together the right mix within the area on a particular street, and you end up with a little faster redevelopment, hopefully, because of the way the code is designed. So 18C, which would be for the downtown, I'm sorry, the Lakewood Station subarea, is similar to the downtown code in that it has all of these uses are allowed except, and then there are a list of prohibited uses within 18C 200. And then there are some that say you can do it, but you have to follow these conditions if you want to do it. And then there's some that are flat-out conditional, meaning they would have to get permission even to build that on. And again, as I mentioned, the design standards are based on the street type, and it looks at the lot size, the coverage, what type of setbacks might be needed, the type of open space that would be required, and then there's also a requirement for green infrastructure in this subarea. Coming back to that idea of the streets govern what type of development. This is a draft. It might be changed actually since this map is developed, but what you'll see here are the dark blue would be the mixed-use streets. That darker green are the quote "green streets" identified as potentially to be developed in a particular way. These lighter green ones, again, this is all that multifamily 3 area we've been talking about, but these would be residential streets, and there are several options for how those may be redeveloped over time. And then once you have the streets identified and the development regulations tied to the various streets, the idea is again to go back to that zoning that's already in place and say you can grow up to X number of units per acre. And you also then have the other development regulations specific to the subarea that the developer needs to follow. So I won't go into the weeds here too much, but this is an example. So this is what's called a four-court street type. Or I'm sorry, it's the type of use allowed on a particular street. And so you'll see this is how the building can be designed. This is that four-court that we're talking about. So in, there's almost a U shape there of an interior four-court for the building. There's requirements for landscaping and pedestrian access. There is a discussion of the type of street and the street car movements in front of that building. So all of that is laid out more so in the code than within this building, you can have this type of use. It has to be residential. It has to be something else. There's more use allowance there, but it's how the building lays out on the street and how you have access to that building, its parking and its pedestrian systems. These are some examples of the residential streets. This is the 60-foot-wide version within some of the areas of the subarea. And so here you're talking about having a sidewalk, a buffer with trees and/or other vegetation along with lighting, a bike lane, the travel lanes in either direction, and then the same thing on the other side. And then there's also the opportunity to call what we're saying are green streets, which have linear parks. It's a little bit different in spacing if you'll look at how wide certain things are. So a little bit narrower sidewalk, a little bit wider landscape or linear park here, or there may be benches or other things that people can enjoy that space more than just to simply walk or bike along. As I mentioned now a couple of times, there is no proposed rezoning of any of the parcels. The idea here is to say we've got a new code that you follow within each zone, and hopefully that code is going to give you more incentive to build at higher densities and maximize what can be done near St. Clair's, near the Sounder Station, near 512 and I-5. Here's an example of why that's the approach. These numbers on the top chart talk about how right now, in this brown-zoned area, the MF3 of the Lakewood Station subarea, there's 475 units on 400, or I'm sorry, 40 acres, which is about 21% of the maximum density that's allowed in that zone as we speak right now with no subarea. The idea in the plan within the subarea plan and code is that that would significantly increase. It may not get to 100% of the maximum zoning allowed, but you may get significantly higher density within that because of what's being allowed with the changing of the development code requirements. So for here, the estimation is that we would go from a 21% capacity usage of this MF3 area up to 68%. In terms of transportation, if you'll remember, in the downtown area, there was a transportation mitigation fee set to help fund the road improvements that would be needed in response to how the city envisages this subarea getting developed over time. In the downtown subarea, there's also a green street loop. There are some intersections that need improvement. There's actually road improvements. Different here in the Lakewood Station subarea, there are pickup, ped, and bike improvements anticipated. There's intersection lighting improvements. And then there's improvements that are going to be made separately from the city's responsibility by Sound Transit and Pierce Transit, access improvements, and the BRT line, hopefully, that will be coming through and even further south of Lakewood. But there is no transportation mitigation be proposed for this station subarea plan, and there are no road improvements required. What has been done is some improvements identified needed for lighting and striking perhaps of roads and the lighting timing at intersections, but no capital road improvements are identified as needed to keep things at an acceptable level of service. So these are the three intersections where some mitigation is required, meaning changing the lighting, timing, or striking that sort of thing. It's Pacific Highway and Sherendale, Pacific Highway and Bridgeport, and then the Bridgeport Way southbound I-5 ramp. And by doing all of the mitigations that are anticipated, you can see a significant improvement at Pacific Highway and Sherendale, going from Level of Service F to Level of Service A. Pacific Highway and Bridgeport gets better. It does not get worse. It improves the status quo. And in the case of the I-5 South ramp, that one is an improvement over what would happen with alternative, excuse me, alternative one without mitigation. It is not better than the no-action alternative, but we would anticipate that this would actually continue to go down over time as population and transportation usage of I-5 increases. So, parking I mentioned briefly. Where we are with parking in, long story short, I'll make it quick. There was an original recommendation made within the package that came from the consultants that was responsive to messages heard by stakeholders and the consultation with our Public Works Department, as well as the Community Development Department. And then there were those differing policies that I mentioned at the start, which was, do you reduce parking to help with cost of development, be it residential or commercial? Or do you want to make sure there's enough car spaces for the people who live and work there now, anticipating that perhaps that may change over time, but not doing away with parking right away? What ended up happening with the proposal that came to the Planning Commission is that it allows for transition to lesser parking over time. There's no on-street parking. But onsite parking is required for all types of uses. The street sections have the pedestrian and the bicycle anticipated within the street designs. The commercial parking standards are similar to what was done in the downtown, and they're also lower than other areas of the city. The multifamily and accessory dwelling unit parking requirements within this subarea are lower than citywide. And then there's also an opportunity for state statute and then city code to reduce parking within one-quarter mile of the Sounder Station through an application process to the city to do that. So I'm not going to go into this really quickly, but in red, you'll see that there is the ABU and the multifamily changes between what happens and the multifamily changes between what happens citywide and in the East Station District. And then you'll see in blue here, this is where the two subareas are the same, but they are different from what is otherwise required citywide. There's also here the text that talks about how within a quarter mile of the Sounder Station, there's ways to seek a reduction in parking requirements, provided certain things are approved by the community development director and that they are low income or extremely low income individuals, seniors or people with disabilities or multifamily housing at the moment rate. What happened at the planning commission was there was an extensive discussion about these two competing issues, the affordability and risk of displacement and market rate desires for more affordable development costs with how many cars do people practically have now and how long is that going to last? And so what you'll see here on this slide is that the planning commission has actually recommended to council that the minimum parking requirements for both senior citizen apartments and multifamily be reduced to no minimum at all. And then because of that, in the other code section, the opportunity within a quarter mile of the Sounder Station would then just apply to the very low or extremely low income and also for people with disabilities, because these other two, we are getting rid of the minimum altogether. So this version of things is what is in front of the council as the draft that you're seeing in your packet this evening. What's being recommended to you by the community and economic development department is that the original parking requirements be brought back into this draft, so it would require an amendment process by the council when it takes action to bring back the original proposal where there is a minimum requirement for both senior citizen and multifamily housing. And then that program of within one quarter mile of the Sounder Station would go back to its original language. So here I am going to hopefully, I'll stop sharing for just a moment, but I'm going to invite this agreeder to jump in. If she's here, if she's not, I can keep going.
Before you leave the parking requirements.
Yes.
Was, there are serious, any serious discussion of the fact that this is literally across the freeway from largest military base on the west coast?
That was brought into, yes, there's a lot of transition that happens as people are.
It's 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 not the transition, it's that the many of the tenants and the non-senior units are going to be single senior, single soldiers and airmen who don't have houses, but they each have a car. And that isn't going to change for the foreseeable future. We've already had a problem over at the former four acres site where there isn't adequate parking because three veteran units are rented by three single individuals who have three cars. So we're different than other places.
Yes.
Then what, what was, how was that? How was the decision impacted by that fact? For the recommendation, I should say.
Right. The recommendation that came from the planning commission was preceded by a presentation that James Guerrero made to the commission talking about the trend toward automated transportation, automated, automatic vehicles and the fact that it is less and less affordable to own a new car. And the idea here is that people that are living at this economic strata maybe should be looking toward mass transit rather than trying to own a car, the more affordable way to get around. And so that was presented the same evening that the planning commission took action. And I think it influenced their decision on whether to amend the proposal for you or not. There was also some conversation had with new planning commission member Philip Holmes, where he was raising the fact that affordable housing gets frustrated or limited when you have additional parking requirements that adds cost to development. So if you want affordable housing, you need to be taking a look at your parking requirements as part of the incentive process or a way to lower the cost. So that's where it came from.
I understand. I respect Mr. Guerrero's opinion. Argument that convinced argument, maybe not convincing, but convinced argument that we should cut down the parking requirements, do away with them entirely. But my question was, to what, in, to what extent and in what depth was it considered that we're different? We have fifty thousand soldiers and airmen across the freeway, seventy percent of whom live off base. Half of whom are going to be pairing up with other people and having, they have more cars per capita than the average home. And that is an average household, then that isn't going to change for the foreseeable future because their transit, that's their asset.
It was not taken into account when the decision to amend was made, Mr. Mayor. It was within the subarea plan and information, but when that decision was made, it wasn't discussed. So with that, I will, Lisa, unless you want me to.
Mr. Waylon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. It's very thorough. And you know, we all spent a fair amount of time reading through this. My question, lots of questions as we kind of noodle over this, but with regard to city policy on parks and open space within, I think it's a quarter mile radius of certain neighborhood areas, this doesn't seem to have any designated open space per se. The proposed code would have like a hundred square feet roughly per unit in terms of common area space or common amenity space and something less than that for private space. And I'm looking at eighteen C five hundred and I, I know they have standards here, but when I look at the diagrams, I don't see that we're designating very much by way of either a linear park, walking path, or much by way of open space for which we might have a transportation mitigation fee to build monies up to purchase.
Yes, and let me try to answer that in a couple of different ways and then I'll ask Lisa to help me as well. When the review of the current land just happened, it was quickly obvious that there was so much built out that there wasn't just land sitting there like maybe in other parks in cities that could be designated as a park if it hadn't already been. There is some linear park space in this subarea. It's not very big. And actually, there is some area that is actually used by BNSF, which is currently zoned parks and recreation and needs to get rezoned to industrial. So that would actually reduce parked designated space in this subarea. However, most, if not all, of the redevelopment that happens, as you mentioned, sir, will require private open space being included. And Lakewood Landing, which is something I have yet to mention tonight, but that is a project that's within this subarea. And the intention there is that public open space would be provided at Lakewood Landing. And then as future phases happen with that, additional will be added to that too. But it's private open space, which is the focus in this subarea.
That's where we really have to kind of make our mark on our development and design standards is Lakewood Landing to ensure that we've got some public open space as a condition of development some way somehow.
Right. And that's one of the reasons too that you see on the residential streets, the option to have the linear parks built into the street itself. Another, another somewhat unique situation is within this subarea and particularly a lot of the residential streets, they are actually located on a right of way that is more than the sixty feet needed for the city's residential street design. Some of them are up to eighty feet wide. And so there was discussion about how to design eighty foot wide rights of way and how to add in some linear parks within some of that space as well. I didn't bring that up in my presentation, but there are eighty foot right of way street sections identified in the code too.
We are trying to make some sort of interconnected walkway, if you will, down a hundred and eight, right, effectively, eventually?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. A lot of good work and I agree with on, on the issue with parking. We got to really rethink that or at least get the presentation from James. So we better understand the thinking that went into it.
Tiffany, Lisa Greeter here. I think the other green space is the alley near Occidental. So in addition to the two green streets, the major ones, and there's an alley that looks like it has a lot of excess right of way. And so there's an idea for a pocket park or gathering space there as well.
I noticed there was a little bit of green over behind off the five twelve exit. And for the life of me, I was trying to understand what that was. It says recreation and I go over there, you know, over by the wonder painting thing in Starbucks. Like what the heck is that?
I don't know. Lisa can answer this. Perhaps Mr. Viewer can.
It's on the northern end of the study area. It, I believe it's actually referring to the RV park. I think that's what it is like an recreation park or something like that. That's an RV park.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a misnomer. Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Farmer had a question as well.
I was curious about this idea of a, of a green street. In the industry, do we consider them equally weighted green street park? I'm not going to take my kids out to play on a street or right next to a street. I've I'm just curious.
Lisa, you want to take that?
Sure. I think even in downtown, there was the concept of green street and I think really what it's supposed to be is more like a linear park so that you would have enhanced landscaping. You might have little nodes of like a picnic or bench or, you know, spots to do. You can see on some some green streets, they, they might have little play areas. So they, it can be designed differently, but, but it is meant to be long. And, and so the areas of, of park wouldn't be large, but it is meant to take advantage of the public space you do have, that the public realm, a big component is, is maybe excess right of way as Tiffany, Tiffany mentioned.
I, I absolutely understand that the geography is what the geography is. And I was just curious if, if depending on where the traffic is, if there would be any mitigations, any walls, any planters, any separation between kids and cars?
There, there could be that. I think internal to this study area, the traffic volumes are low, I would say on the edges like Bridgeport, that might be. I don't think we're proposing that there. So I think they're lower volume in general.
Okay. Thank you. And then before I yield, I wanted to also throw in my two cents about bringing back the original parking, parking, proposed parking structure. The, having worked on the state campus for a number of years and having them seen built, they built an entire building and brought in a whole bunch of employees and didn't put a single parking spot in. And that has been a big issue for them. And so this, this notwithstanding the mayor's comments, which I completely am a hundred percent behind, we're not at a place where we can, we can go fully, fully automated transit. So we're, we're, we need to accommodate our cars for quite some time.
Ms. Bell.
I, thank you, Mayor. So I was just piggybacking off of a council member Farmer's question about the green streets. I just wondered if you had any examples. I would love to just see what you're thinking of with that besides a park bench that's on a busy street. So just some examples so I could visually see what that would mean.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
Sure. I think there's some examples in Renton and Seattle, and we can, we can dig up additional ones, but I think if you've seen the Burnett Park in Renton, it's sort of a park space in excess right of way that has play features and it's buffered from traffic with sort of parking areas that are pretty wide. You're not really next to fast flowing traffic. There's others in Seattle. We can, we can provide some links, I think.
That would be great. Thank you.
Mike, you look frozen there. We'll go to Mr. Boke and then see if Mr. Ransfield is back online.
Just a couple of questions. First, a comment. I will back, Ms. Spear did a very nice job of describing the planning commission meeting where the, the vote to reduce or to eliminate the parking requirement occurred. And, and Mr. Guerrero has mentioned that he, he would like to make a presentation in front of us. He asked for that. And that's up to the council to, to, to allow that to happen. But I think Ms. Spear did a very nice job of, of giving what, and I, an impression of what that that was, the presentation was about. A couple of questions. First of all, the hospital, was the hospital at all involved in the discussions about what their future needs are or anything like that?
We certainly reached out to them. We provided them with survey invitations, stakeholder meeting invitations, and all the information regarding planning commission meetings and public hearing. And Lisa, I'm not sure, was there a specific response to you call from St. Clair representatives?
I, I don't recall something specific from them.
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, would you want Mr. Ransfield to maybe ask his question?
Yes, his hand up. Mr. Ransfield.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I thank you for the, for the presentation and to do that. I would be interested in hearing Mr. Guerrero's presentation. I think the, the right answer on parking is somewhere between the original proposal and the, and the planning commission's proposal. Their proposal on senior housing may be maybe workable if there's a, of something that's being built for, for that, to, to do that, to go on. But the deputy mayor, you know, spoke about funding some open space amenity improvements, whether it's through the green streets or pocket parks or things. And in the downtown plan, those things are funded, not with traffic mitigation, transportation mitigation, but there is a, a a, a process of where if someone can't provide all the onsite open space that they could pay into a fund to provide community owned common open space somewhere. And if that is an element that could be included in this, it might get us there. Thinking about the area, there is a small pocket park passive open space that is actually operated by the fire department. Because they have a, a plaza and a monument to firefighters who were part of the Lakewood Fire Department, but it's it's quite a few square feet and got, got seating and, and is a plaza and you can actually hold, hold a, a, a small event there if you needed to. So that's part of the inventory that just doesn't show up and is being zoned as open space. And I am, I am I, I'm, I'm ve- ve- very pleased with how this is progressing. Think that we'll be able to deal with it in a faster timeline than we dealt with the downtown. You know, faster timeline than we dealt with the downtown. Area plan. So I look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of follow up questions and thanks Tiffany for a great presentation. It's an awful lot of information, definitely more than I can absorb in the time period of the presentation. But. A couple of questions. Does the existing zoning, you said there isn't really a change. Does it allow for multi storey, story office building in the proximity of the hospital? Because it seems like a natural area for medical office development, given they have healthcare and just these expansion.
Yeah, the transit oriented commercial was intended to be mixed use development, which could be multi story. Yes.
And. Oh, there was a, with respect to the design standards, there was an example of a U shaped building.
Yes.
Is there any analysis of the, and it's like, this comes from complete ignorance. Is there any analysis of the impact of the design standards on the increased cost of buildings? When we as a city start placing requirements out there. You know, for example, overly simplified if, you know, there's certain spans in a residential home where. You get a lot of 12 foot wide kitchens that people would like 14 or 16 feet wide, but they. Increase the cost of construction substantially just to go that extra two feet. And I'm certain the same kind of thing happens in some circumstances in commercial or mixed use buildings. And so do we analyze that when we determine how to. Pro- prolongate design standards?
I will do a very high level answer and then ask Lisa to save me here. The, the various building designs that you see are all demonstrative and illustrative, meaning none of them are mandates. You don't have to go to building this way. And depending on the type of street you're on, there are a number of different housing or commercial building choices that you can incorporate. Because what you're, what you're complying with is setback distance, parking requirements, height limits, those sorts of things. So there's not necessarily the building has to be this wide, this tall, shaped like this. It's more, you can do whatever you want within these brackets and without ultimately.
There's not a formal cost analysis, but we did share the draft regulations with a stakeholder group that included developers. Got feedback and that's where we were trying to hone in on. The, the building form like Tiffany mentioned, that will guide how many units they can build. And try to kind of balance the issue around parking that we've been discussing. So it, it, so we could make it attractive to build there. And, and we did make tweaks in response to those comments. So I would say at least from a expertise point of view, we shared it.
Final, I guess, final question. And I wish I could recall the name. One of the main arterials in Vancouver, B.C. Has. It's a commercial area and mixed use area as residential there, but it's, it's. High rise buildings, not super high rise, but high rise. And they seem to have incorporated the green space requirement of the building in a setback from the arterial. And the, what you've referred to as the excess or unneeded. A right of way into a flowing green space so that it's almost like you're walking through a park in front of these high rise buildings. Because they, instead of just saying, you got to put out a hundred, 150 square feet or whatever it is for each unit. They say where that's got to be and they incorporate that into the design of, of the street and the neighborhood. And it comes off really well. I don't know exactly what the requirements were. But it's like you're walking through a park, even though you're walking on a main arterial with. High rise buildings on both sides of the street. And so I was wondering if anything like that can or should be or was considered. When you're talking about the design around eight foot, 80 foot right of ways and, and minimum green space requirements.
Because of where those wider rights of way are located, which is primarily in the residential area. There wasn't that kind of discussion related to the arterial designing. However, the intent of all of this form based code is to say, we're going to make this more accessible on the pedestrian level. So people coming to a building aren't walking through a sea of cars to get to the building at the back of the lot. Everything is, is closer to the avenue, the travel way for all modes of transportation. So kind of a mixed answer for you, sir, is yes, in the residential area to some extent, not so much in the commercial. And Lisa, I don't know if there's anything else you got?
I think that sounds right, but I think as we kind of bring back the examples on the linear parks. Example you were mentioning, Councilmember.
Mr. Bransdeter.
I really, my hand is just sitting there.
Stick your hand down, please. All right. Well, thank you very much and I, I hope to. I, I can continue to share the optimism that this will be faster than the last time we went through this process.
And if you wouldn't mind, sir, just to finish up very quickly. The planned action is the CPO based document that says, as we had with the downtown plan. If you have the estimation of build out and all the impacts because of build out within the sub area already. Anticipated and identified, when people do specific project, they don't have to go through CPO with that project. And so this, this sub area plan has a planned action as well. In terms of process, tonight is the study session that's been identified. As of now, there are no additional study sessions prior to the public hearing, which is scheduled for April 5th. And then moving forward beyond that, at this point, your council is scheduled to consider action on April 19th. But all that occurs is subject to your decision to change that up or adding the other additional sessions in the week. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions from council? Thank you both for being here tonight and continuing to educate us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Now move to reports by the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. First off, I'd maybe like to close the loop on the last item there, the. Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan. It would appear there was consensus that you would like to invite. Planning Commissioner James Guerrero back to give a presentation on parking. And if so, may I suggest that that be included as part of the public hearing. On this sub area plan proposal that is scheduled for April 5th. If that would work. Because then, because then it can get, you can get it on the record as a part of that as well. That would be my suggestion. If not, we can look for some time, we can bump some things out. And, you know, schedule a specific standalone study session, but my recommendation would be to do the former.
Valuable clue here, right?
Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll get, we'll reach out to Mr. Guerrero on that. A few, a few updates. Again, continuing along the line of the, the, the Transit District Subarea Plan. We have been in contact with Sound Transit and actually Sound Transit is going to be giving this body an update at your. Next regular meeting on March 15th about what they call their. Lakewood Station Transit Funds. They have $44 million available to invest in support of the transit station. And since the transit station sits right in the middle of the sub area plan. They have reached out to us and have been having talks and conversations. They're actually very, very impressed. With the work that Ms. Spear and her team have done. And so they would like to partner with us to invest those dollars. To focus on non motorized improvements to get people to come to the station, to either walk or to bike to the station. So that would mean bike lanes, sidewalks, things along those lines, multimodal transportation alternatives. As well as perhaps more parking, but not structured parking, more along the lines of additional surface parking, either to the north or the south. Of the existing station or perhaps even over in the neighborhood, neighborhood itself, as well as some drop offs. For folks who would just like to drop off members of their family or friends to utilize the sounder. Station that's located there. You know, the, when we talk about connectivity, you know, and again, these have been very, very broad conversations that we've had with Sound Transit. You know, getting, you know, connectivity over into the Springbrook neighborhood, which is a very underserved community. Including over to the park as well as to Lakewood Landing and perhaps even over to Bridgeport and over to 112th. And again, to create an opportunity for folks to be able to, you know, either, either walk or bike to the station. In addition, some of those monies could be used to partner with Pierce Transit from additional bus services within that area. Again, to deliver people to the transit station itself. So what Sound Transit wants to give you an update on is just that these monies are available. It's part of their Sound Transit 2 funding program. Though note though, that as, as far as if the monies are ultimately going to be available, is still be, to be determined. Right now they are, but I think as we've reported in the past, the Sound Transit Board is doing a realignment of all of their projects. Given some of the financial challenges that they're currently experiencing, as, as I understand it, brought on by COVID-19. So they're looking to not eliminate projects. That's what they're saying now, but rather push things out. A number of years or a few years. So this project may end up on that list to be determined. But in the meantime, Sound Transit does want to partner with us on identifying some options and alternatives. So that's some very, very good news because, you know, $44 million will go a long way to helping implement this sub area plan. Presuming, you know, the city council does adopt it here in, in the near, near future. Along the lines of, of money. I think you have probably all aware that the Senate. The US Senate did approve the American Rescue Plan Act this past weekend. That includes over $65 billion set aside for local governments, which would include Lakewood. You know, we're looking to get 14 to 15 million dollars. Also, it's likely that we might get some additional home monies, which is part of our CDVG program. To the tune of over a million dollars. Typically, we receive about $300,000 a year or so. So that's pretty significant. Right now, the Senate has sent their adopted bill back to the House for ratification. That could happen this week and if the House does ratify the Senate's action that they took this weekend, then it will go for the, to the president. For signature and I know there's been some changes within the bill itself in terms of maybe some of the dollar amounts and when it's going to be distributed. But what I'd like to do is to pull together a report. On kind of all that is this program, including some potential uses that this body might want to consider. Here in Lakewood and have that as a discussion point as part of your retreat on, on March 27th. So probably more, more, more to follow, more to follow there. And speaking of the retreat, it is scheduled for March 27th, the Saturday beginning at 8:30. Typically, I think in the past, the council's gone to noon or one o'clock or, you know, if you want to go a little later, just let me know. You know, what the timeline is you'd like to do, or if you want to go to three or nine to three or eight to two or, you know, 8:30 to 5:30. You know, we'll be more than happy to accommodate whatever, whatever your needs are. We did get confirmation that one of our former employees, Shannon Kelly Fong, will be coming back and joining us. To help facilitate the retreat, given that she facilitated the first retreat that, that occurred last, actually one month, one year ago yesterday. So boy, how time flies. So we'll have a full agenda for you. And, you know, a couple of things that we're working on is also updating the accomplishments associated with the strategic plan. To include all the 2020 accomplishments. Also, something I would suggest that this body think about is. You know, typically we do goals, you know, every two years and it aligns with the biennial budget. But, you know, I think things are a little different right now and I would ask this body maybe to consider going a little bit longer term to 2023. Particularly if, if COVID-19 recovery is going to be a key component of, of, of what we do in the next few years. And I think it's going to be particularly with all this money coming down. The, coming down from the federal government. So again, I'd just like to kind of plant that seed with you. If you think that that's something worth having a conversation about. As part of the meeting, the logistics, so, you know, the council has expressed an interest to meet in person. So we will be doing that in the council chambers. However, we are going to have to practice social distancing and masks. The meeting will have to be open to the public. So likewise, we'll have to have an area set aside for the public. And likewise, they will be required to practice social distancing and, and wearing masks as, as, as well. So might be a little funky in terms of the setup just because of the way the room is. But we're, 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 we're working on that as, you know, right now. And so we hope to be ready, we'll be ready on March 27th. Some other good news to report on the, on the, on the financing side. So the Puget Sound Regional Council. You know, they have some contingency federal monies available. And one of the projects that they, that, that the, the local. TCC or I always forget the name, the Transportation Coordinating Committee is recommending be funded. Is a Lakewood project specifically Silicon Boulevard from between Weller and 83rd. And the, the grant amount is almost $1.5 million. So that would leave about $775,000 left to fully fund that project. And you might recall that last year, that was a project that we requested PSRC funding for, but it didn't quite make the cut. So the good news is that at this point in time, it's being recommended for contingency funding. And hopefully it'll make it, hopefully ultimately the PSRC board will, will sign off on that. So, so hopefully I'll have some even better news for you here in the near future. The, our spring cleanup partnership with Waste Connections is scheduled for Saturday and Sunday, April 17th. And the 18th respectively. We are looking for some volunteers. And so if you're interested in volunteering at one of the time slots, please let myself or the city clerk know. You know, we do have a handful of staff that come out there and help out. We're also reaching out to the youth council this year to have them come out. The role of the volunteers is really just to welcome people in as they come in and then just to check their IDs to make sure that they're Lakewood residents. Because the program is, or Lakewood businesses is, is, is only set aside for folks who, who either live in Lakewood or have businesses in, in, in Lakewood. At your next regular meeting on March 15th, we hope to have a contract for this body to be able to consider. And, and, and take action on as it relates to the JBLM North Access Phase One project. We received 14 bids last Tuesday and we do have a couple, a low bidder. And so right now, the Public Works Engineering Department is checking to make sure that they're also not just the lowest bidder, but the most responsible bidder. And that's what we will bring forward to the city council again for your review and consideration. The project did come in below engineer's estimate as well as our budget to the tune, I think of about 400 or $450,000. So those savings are funds that then we can roll into to draw down on the delta of the phase two component of, of, of the project. So again, some good news there. Lakewood Water District also piggybacked with the city on this. And they too experience some, are experiencing some significant project savings from, from, from the bid. As you know, you know, our strategy is, you know, to kind of go to the, you know, bid out our major projects, you know, the latter part of one year early in the year. So that we get the best bids before, you know, all the contractors get busy for the year. And so I think once again, that's a, that's a reflection of why we've gotten such, you know, good bits. Might have seen last week, the Pierce County Council approved a considerable amount of money for rental assistance. So that gets sent over to the city. So the money is available for both tenants and landlords. And so we are in the process of notifying folks in Lakewood that these monies are, 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 are available. For, for any needs that they have, have on their, have on their end. Also, I'd like to recognize some current and past city employees. They all recently graduated from the. The Second Annual Northwest Women's Leadership Academy, which is a partnership with the Washington City County Managers Association. As well as Association of Washington Cities and MRSC. And it's actually the second cohort. And so the, the, the three distinguished graduates that have a Lakewood connection are our planning manager, Courtney Brunel, our former communications manager, Bryn Grimley, and our former senior policy analyst, Shannon Kelly Fong. They all began, this cohort began working together with a number of other women here in Washington State that work in local government way back in the middle of 2019. And they had to take a little bit of a break because of COVID-19, and then they completely transitioned to a virtual learning environment, and were able to complete and have a nice graduation event this past Friday morning, where the keynote speaker was former Governor Christine Gregoire. It was really nice to see her and, and, and listen to her. So do you want to publicly recognize all three of those outstanding women who, again, have worked here at the city of Lakewood? Also, the first cohort also included a city of Lakewood employee. Some of you might remember Tori Brusitas, who went on to work at the city of Bothell as an assistant city manager, and is now a chief of staff with the city of Seattle within one of their finance department units. So doing very, very well. So again, just wanted to recognize them for that. Just some upcoming, you know, events that you might want to be aware of. On March tenth, actually, this Wednesday, beginning at eleven AM, our two US senators, Senator Patty Murray and Senator Maria Cantwell, will be having a virtual event sponsored by AWC, just to talk about what's going on in Washington DC. And I know one of the key points that they're going to want to talk about is, again, the, the one point nine million trillion dollar, one point nine trillion dollar bill that the Senate just passed and that the House is expected to pass here in, in, in the near future. Also, the next day, on Thursday afternoon at four-thirty, the homeowners, the Home Ownership Center of Tacoma is, which is a nonprofit, and they've been working with the city. They're going to be having a groundbreaking ceremony over in the, the nine thousand block of Washington Boulevard Southwest, where they're going to be building two affordable new homes. And so this body is invited, and if you'd like to come out and grab a shovel, you're more than welcome to do so. And then also, March twenty-fourth, AWC is going to be having a lobby day. It's going to be virtual. I, I think it's worth, I'm going to be attending, you know, the first, the first part of it. There's going to be some, you know, some updates and some reports from members of the state legislature. And that's from eight to eleven, but it's not expected to go three hours. They expect it to maybe go two hours or so. Also, a couple of upcoming community events that I thought you'd be interested in. One is that Community Healthcare, which has been a longtime great partner with the city of Lakewood. You actually provide funding to them as part of the one percent for human services program, and they're located right across the street on Gravel Lake Drive from us. Community Healthcare, they're having their annual lunch and laughter fundraising event. And so it's always a really a fun event, and they always get a good comedian. And it's a great opportunity for them to report out on, 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 on their successes that they, that they have. And they're going to do two virtual events. One's going to be at noon, and one's going to be at six PM. So if you have, have an opportunity, I would highly suggest you take a look at that. I know the city of Lakewood, when they have their events in downtown Tacoma, I think it's usually at the convention center or over at one of the hotels, we usually end up with a, with a, with a big table or two. And then also, locally, the Lakewood Communities and Schools is going to be having their annual champions for youth breakfast and fundraising event, which, again, will be online this year, is scheduled for March thirty-first, from eight AM to, to, to nine AM. And I know members of this body, I know Councilman Roboki until recently, I don't know if he still is, was a, was a board member of CIS. But again, they do great work here in, 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 in Lakewood. And if you have a chance, I would encourage you to attend that as well. So with that, that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And quickly go to council comments, because we have an executive session. Is Moss?
Good, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brad Stetter?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Isabel?
Good, Mr. Mayor.
Is Farmer?
Breaking the cycle. Sorry. Um, I, I gave the city council report at the school board tonight. Nothing major of note on their end, although they have been hearing good, good excitement about the farmer's market, and, and they're really excited for it to happen, and excited for it to be still at Fort Silicon Park with the great parking and the open air and blah, blah, blah. So very excited there. I did throw out a challenge on Facebook for the council to have a team for the Emergency Food Network Hunger Walk that will take place virtually throughout the entire month of May. So contact me, and we'll see if we can't get that together. Remember the purple recycling can conversation that we had recently? That might be coming back. So we might, there might be a request for a presentation to council, so stay tuned. And I wanted to see if we could formalize some discussion about the joint resolution on, between us and the school district on diversity, equity, and inclusion. You, the city manager was kind enough to attach a draft to one of his most recent emails. And I'll throw it out there. I, I, I think it looks great, and I would like to move that we add it to our agenda for approval next week, if anybody else is so inclined.
Okay, let's put it on the agenda. I, actually, I have to admit that attachment flew by me, so. But we'll put it on the agenda.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. Bokey.
I'll, I'll pass, Mayor. I'm fine.
Mr. Whalen?
L N says to pass, but my only report is that I did attend my Pierce Transit Board meeting, my first one tonight. It was very interesting. They're working on all sorts of good information, more to follow. That's it.
Thank you. And I don't think we should pass in this meeting without mentioning that today is International Women's Day. And as I am proud father of four professional women, every day has been International Women's Day in my household for, for thirty years. But, so it's a bit surprising that I'm the one that noticed it. Because I, I'm surrounded. So I think that's important to note. And tomorrow morning at seven-thirty is virtual coffee with the mayor, and this beer is going to present again. So if you want to find out more about what we're supposed to be deciding, it's a good opportunity. And we need to go to an executive session. How long do you think we'll need, Mr. Caulfield?
One hour, Mayor.
All right. We will recess now into executive session for approximately sixty minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten, to discuss with legal counsel representing the city litigation or potential litigation to which the agency or, or a member acting as an official, in a, in an official capacity is, or is likely to become a party when public knowledge with respect to that discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. After the executive session, we will return to this public session, and will take no further action other than to adjourn. So we are in recess for sixty minutes into executive session. Please join the confidential meeting.
Right on the nose, Mauer.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.
All right, we'll see you tomorrow. Thank you.
Yeah, bright and shiny.